Subdivision final. It's already gone through twice. Minor subdivision. That one looked red light, it was a holdover. We've already been approved.
Here is on that spring class of subdivision.
Alrighty, alrighty. It is six o'clock on the dot. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Ocean Springs Planning Commission meeting is June 10th, 2025. All commissioners are present except for Andy Phelan and Nick Geiser. I'll lead us in a prayer and Marshall Johnson will lead us in the pledge. Lord, thank you for the day that you have provided us. Thank you for your wisdom to everybody and to the loved ones we have lost and they look down on us and smile. And in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Religions to the flag of the United States of America and to the covenant to stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moving on, the approval for the minutes of May 13th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we do a special call to approve these minutes from last time because there's a lot of emissions in here and I think they need to be tidied up. So can we do that? Can we schedule one another time to approve those minutes? Thanks.
Alright, do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? I'm going to move on to old business. It's a public hearing on 901 Beenville Boulevard, northwest corner of Beenville Boulevard and Washington Avenue requesting a vacation of alley. I'm going to open it up to Wade.
Yes. Okay, just to fill you in on the background of this one, this is first thing to y'all at the April 8 meeting. At that time, also was sent back to draw by Port of Alderman, the instructions to for staff to obtain a title opinion regarding the history of the property. If you've done that, that title opinion from Miss Sullivan is in your packet. And just to, to get on the basis of this, again, this is a city right away that extends north from Beenville Boulevard between several properties. It is not done as a street, it is does contain an active sanitary sewer fund that flows northward of this property. And request is to vacate the right of way with the intention of being developed as part of a commercial development on some of the properties that are abutted on the southern end of it. One of the conclusions of the title opinion was that this was given to the city in about 1877 and no record of it being maintained by the city, but it is not part of a type of subdivision to the measure that she could find. So that kind of, I think that brings us up to date where we are right now. And Will, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that sums it up pretty good. Thanks Wade. I know there's been a lot of back and forth on this item for months now between the planning department, myself and the applicant and the Burton's. I put a memo in the packet, I hope you guys saw, on the legal authority to proceed. Again, this is, there's no question, this is the city's alley. It's, the city's to vacate or not, I mean, it's whatever you guys want to recommend. My understanding is at this late hour, there may be a new proposal between the parties. I don't know too much on that, but I'll let them discuss that.
I do want to add one more thing, sorry, regarding the sanitary sewer is that it is mentioned that it runs northward and as part of their development plan, they intend to abandon, intend to abandon the sewer. If they do that, they would need to add a manhole, and it's northern end of it, since the sewer, northern regression, but that would be something that would be worked out as part of the review of the site plan and building permit as part of our design plan for to have children built on this.
And I also want to add, sorry, I forgot to mention, if the city does proceed under the vacation statute to do so, they would have to find two things. As I put in the memo, number one, a public need, and number two, you need due compensation to abutting landowners that are immediate adjoining landowners. And that's any damages if the city find them. So those two items, much like a rezone, have legal requirements, those are the two legal requirements for a vacate under the statute. So keep that in mind and those items need to be discussed if that's the route we take.
Alrighty. Got a question for Wade. So Wade, does the city have any short-term or long-term plans to ever turn this vacated alley into an actual alley?
Not to my knowledge.
Looks like that. We have two letters that were sent in, my two, one from Raj Thule. He had sent a letter previously in favor of the vacation and now he has rescinded, is in favor of it. I'd like to have this letter, make a motion to put it in the minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? And then we have a letter from Tom Davies. Have you all had a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Alright, do I have a motion to put it in the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright.
Moving on, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. So, alrighty. I'd like to come up and speak on the vacation of the alleyway.
Yes, David Wheeler, representing the applicant on this matter. You can leave your packet and letter that I sent in like Thursday, I believe, or the 4th, or like Wednesday, basically reciting what's shown in the title opinion that the city obtained, that this property is not part of any formal planted property or subdivision. So the applicable statute that you're dealing with is the one that Will mentioned, 21377, that authorizes the city to vacate streets and alleys within the city limits upon the finding of public good and just compensation to adjoining landowners for any damages that they may sustain. If you know from your packet that this alley is not an eastern alley, there's a lot of park in it, there's trees growing in it, and from prior vacation that the city did back in 2000 and then resolution was passed in 2009 recognizing that vacation of the east-west portion of this alley that used to run from Church Street to the northern end of it.
Somebody touched it. Guy's talking to it now, I do apologize.
Hello? So the city's already vacated part of this alley and part of that vacation the city found that the alley was abandoned and for a period, at that time, for a period in excess of 20 years and they haven't been used, same thing applies to the north-south portion of the alley. Aspects of the vacation that would be for the public good is it would assist in removing vacant piece of property from the city tax roll, which is a property that's going to be developed as part of the development of five parcels of property. That development will create dollars for the city, it will put improvements on the tax rolls for the city during the ISO, frankly, at that intersection. It eliminates the city's responsibility, which they have for maintaining public alleys, although this one hasn't been maintained in over probably 30 years now. It would eliminate the city's liability for anyone getting injured in a public alley, that's the responsibility of the city to maintain. If the alley is not vacated, you could have a situation where the two lives on the east of the alley are developed and the three lives on the west of the alley are developed, you've got an overcrowded, unmanaged alley in the middle of these properties. There are other alleys like this in the city, on the other side of Bourbon King, I think there's a city alley that's showing a tax pass, I'll take that as an analogy. You have to determine if the vacation is approved, that it's for the public good and you have to determine due compensation to abutting landowners for any damages they may sustain. Pelican Suites is the owner of a parcel of land that's located at the north end of this alley, and their objection has been that the alley provides them access, another access for their property. But we know from the aerials that you have in your packet that there is no access in this alley. The developers have offered to give an easement to Pelican Suites, and that was in the drawing that was in my letter, attached to my letter that I sent. The whole alley may have access to not only Church Avenue and Beenville Boulevard, but also Washington Avenue. That would, in my opinion, constitute just compensation in the event there is any damage. Right now, there's an alley that they can use, and the future, if you vacate it, they need an easement that they could use. The title opinion establishes that the alley is city property, and has been for almost 200 years, or 250 years. Our discussions with the city, we've been invited to the city, has actually been the intention of improving this alley, maintaining this alley, or opening this alley. The, I think it's just obvious that all of the people around the alley wanted to vacate it, so something could be developed in this property that would help advance the interest of Ocean Springs, put improvements on the tax rolls, and give the city some relief from empty land sitting at the corner of one of the main intersections coming into the city. You could certainly condition the vacation of the alley on the developer granting an easement to Pelican Suites, and you can find that that would be just compensation. And that's what we ask that you do. The Rick Chancellor, one of the developers is here, would like to speak as well.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Rick Chancellor, 2660 Towne State Avenue, Cardiff Development Partners. Good evening, planning commission, thanks for the opportunity to address the project. As part of Beenville and Washington, and our application to vacate the alley. This is a middle corner in the city, over one acre of land at a highly trafficked intersection. For decades, it sat mostly vacant and underutilized. Having such a key corner in an undeveloped state for so many years is not the best representation for the city. The boatyard located on a portion of the property is ready to relocate to a more appropriate location. This presents an opportunity to develop the property into something more productive, generating more jobs and income to the city. Why is this property sat for so many years in this condition? There are six different land parcels that comprise our project site with three different stakeholders, two of which are private parties plus the city alley. Assembling properties like this is not an easy task, and many developers would not pursue this. We have the privately owned properties under contract and are before you tonight for the approval to vacate the alley between these properties. The alley parcel runs north-south and does not currently function as an alley, given it is just land area, unimproved, and without a viable connection to be unbilled. City staff has told us that alleys in the city are problematic and that they have no intention of spending taxpayer money to improve the alley to make it usable. We have consent for the vacation of the alley from all adjacent property owners except for one, Pelican Suites LLC at 1109 Washington, which is the adjacent property to the northeast of our project area. In our previous planning commission hearing, the objection from the owner of Pelican Suites was that they wanted to maintain secondary access from their property to the alley area. However, stated this alley is just raw land, unimproved, with no intention to ever improve it, and no viable curb cut connection to be unbilled. So what benefit or value does this alley parcel even have to this property owner? Arguably very little to none. In the interest of cooperation, we have prepared an agreement to grant an access easement that would allow cross-access between our project and 1109 Washington. This easement agreement provides for a viable connection not only to Beenville, but also to Church and to Washington. We presented this to the property owner on April 17th, over seven weeks ago, and we've not received any substantive response to that. If this property owner's sole interest is preserving secondary access to the property, why have they not contacted us or responded to discuss the specifics of the easement that we offered? In the event this body determines that under statute they're entitled to just compensation, we believe the greatly expanded access at no cost to them satisfies this requirement. It's also important to note that the property owners of our project site and the boatyard never heard from this adjacent property owner in all the years they've owned it regarding an interest in the alley or for secondary access. The alley is a liability for the city with maintenance costs and risk. If somebody were to be injured there, it does not generate any revenue to the city and it's only usable with a sizable investment of taxpayer dollars, which would produce nothing in return. Our project removes the liability and turns this into something productive to increase jobs and revenue for the city. This key property at a highly trafficked intersection will become a viable use, not an ISO. With the addition of sidewalks and reducing the number of curb cuts along Beenville from three that exist now to one, our project enhances long-term safety for traffic and pedestrians. We are willing to grant the adjacent property owner an access easement that provides them with the viable secondary access to the property. We are providing the access they don't currently have. As a result, there cannot be any claim for damage from the vacation of the alley, as there is no diminution in value, but enhancement in the value that we are providing with the access. We urge the planning commission to act tonight to approve the vacation of the alley without further delay. We have an opportunity tonight to consolidate these properties into something more productive and a much better representation for the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Going to open the room up to people that are for and against.
Dan Burton, 1109 Washington Avenue. I'm the party that's causing the problems, apparently, in this situation. So I do apologize that I'll have to go through this with everybody. I want to quote something for you that I'll go through my comments and stuff, because I do, I really do, I would like to have a takeaway from this. This is a very important decision for the city of Ocean Springs as far as the development. That intersection is probably one of the most key intersections that this city has. So what's decided here by the planning commissioner and ultimately the Board of Alderman is very important for the future of the city of Ocean Springs. And I want to, I don't mind getting beaten up or something like that or winning, but the thing is, I want to have a fair fight and I'd like to present the information so that our educated decision for whatever the benefit of this city is actually put forward. So I'll start off with this real quick for you. Quote, "Traffic congestion is an issue downtown, and both of the arteries come into downtown." Close quote. Ocean Springs Mayor Kenny Holloway said, quote, "We just want to make sure the businesses get service, the residents are safe, and the delivery trucks and commercial vehicles can do their part down there." Close quote. MDOT estimates the total cost of the project to be just shy of $1 million. And I believe this was through WLUX. This was just a couple weeks ago, okay? So this has, so this has some significant impact for this city. And what I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, say that, you know, you have a private landowner that is actually trying to convince the city to close an alley that's owned by the city. Okay. I mean, I've heard comments, I've heard comments that basically, you know, having came to somebody and asked them about it, having tried to get the city to do anything for the property and stuff. Well, let me tell you something, when I bought this property, and I am from Ocean Springs, I graduated Ocean Springs High School in 1987, so I'm kind of showing my age here, okay? So I, this was my ward whenever I lived here. I lived at 1502 Quarter Street here. I grew up in this area, okay? I walked down the street down here. So I'm not from the outside, I'm from here, okay? So the thing about it is, is that a private, private landowner is asking this, you know, for the city to give up city property for their benefit, okay? This gone all the time, I understand that. But the thing is, is that, you know, Mr. Norman, you know, I went full circle with him related to legal stuff. At first, we had to have all the landowners approve this. Now we don't have to have the landowner approvals. I want to make sure something for the record, I've never said that the city didn't have the right to close an alley that the city owned. The city of Ocean Springs has owned this alley since 1877. You have a title opinion on that, or a title, I don't know if it's an official title opinion, but it came from an attorney's office, I'm not an attorney, I'm a CPA. Okay, so I think, so I think that's very clear. It's 160 years that, you know, you can sit here and say, oh, it's not in a dedicated subdivision. Okay, a subdivision is kind of a modern terminology. I live in this subdivision or that subdivision, that's what everybody thinks, okay? A subdivision is exactly what it is, soap dividing of a parcel, okay? And Mr. Cox was smart enough, you know, when everyone was horse and buggy in 1877, to actually come forward and say, listen, I want to give this and I want to have, I want to go ahead and dedicate this to the city and give it to the city, okay? I can't imagine, he could never imagine that now 50,000 cars pass in front of that building on a daily basis. I'm sure he could never understand that. So from that standpoint, I'm not for, I'm not for the city to just, you know, that alley, just to give that alley to a private developer, you know, I'm not, I'm not for that, actually. The reason why that alley is there is because there was some thought and process put into this to protect property owners to have access to their property. It's in your city code that I have the right to have an alley behind my property, okay? For access, okay? That's what the whole thing is. I mean, I'll go to Mr. Norman's, you know, opinion, and I appreciate, I appreciate his letter, and I mean, I will call, I will call your attention to page two of his letter, you know, that relates to applicable legal standards. Again, Jim, I'm not an attorney, but I can read, and I did graduate Ocean Springs High School, the best, you know, city school in the state of Mississippi. So, you know, the thing is, is the vacation's for a public, you know, for, you know, for public good. Okay, we're not talking about a pier on Biloxi Beach or the harbor or something like that, where somebody, you know, we're going to take some property and we're actually going to get it, and a fish pier can be done, so kids can go fishing, okay? I've always said from inception, it's about access, so I can get my customers in and out of the property, okay? And so the thing is, public good is having public access. And so from that standpoint, it doesn't meet that, it doesn't meet that requirement that Mr. Norman is pointing out to you. The second point is just compensation, okay? I haven't even talked money, I don't care about the money. I couldn't care less about the money. I don't need the money. Okay, so from a standpoint, that's not why I'm here, I'm not here to get money from the city. I mean, I hate, I haven't even had cost the city money to be able to do this. But I think it doesn't meet that requirement right there. So there's, there's just no compelling evidence for a vacation at this point. And, you know, and the thing is, MDOT has already said they're going to do more traffic and stuff like that. And so the thing about it is, that I'm going to continue to have problems with access, okay? At some point, you know, I have been asking the city to clean up that alley here recently when this became a situation. So from the standpoint, I'm going to continue to fight for property rights to have access. I'll try to wrap this up because I don't want to be, I know there's other people here The other thing is, you know, they're talking about an easement across their access, across their property and stuff like that. Okay, I'm not interested in that, okay? And the reason I'm not interested in that is because I have liability. You're asking me to take a little more liability because I'm actually having to actually ask my customers to go across another person's property to dodge pedestrian traffic as well as vehicular traffic, then to get onto, then to get onto Highway 90, okay? Please don't put me more liability, you know, and that's why you have a public, that's why you have a public alley there. A public alley is to serve what? The public. So I would, I would, you know, I'm not opposed to development, okay? Mr. Wheeler and I have worked on many projects, Mr. Wheeler can get up here and tell you, I'm probably one of the most pro-development people on the coast as far as development. But the thing about it is, it has to be smart development and there has to be a reasonable expectation to protect property owner's rights as well as to not take people, make people take on additional liability. They have not come forward with that offer to me currently, and I'm going to continue to oppose it until I have something that's going to meet that criteria. So again, thank you for your time and I hope we can get this resolved, you know, amicably and do something good for the city of Ocean Springs.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Is there anybody in the audience for or against that would like to speak? Name and address, please.
1102 Sunset Drive. I haven't heard this yet, so I just wanted to bring it up, that I was reading, that for Mississippi law, case law, that the city has the right to ask for full compensation of the assessed value if the alleyway was in a long duration, as the gentleman just said, 25 years or more. And also, you're talking about the current value and use for the people who are against it. It also can look at future use, that it may diminish the value of his property because his future use of that property or future market for his property is somewhat hindered. So I just hadn't heard that yet, so I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Like to speak for or against? Name and address, please.
Tim Carlson, 2310 19th Street, Gulfport, Mississippi, Southeast Commercial Mills Estate. So we are the brokers representing the ownership on this property, and we've represented them for probably the last, I would say, 18 months or so. And during that timeframe, met the developers, the gentleman who was just up here speaking. And we've worked with them to assemble all the properties that are there, even though our clients... our clients, Angela Taylor and Crystal Mason and their family, they own five of the parcels, excuse me, four of the parcels, with the corner being owned by Sherri Owen. And this road, and this proposed alleyway or the old alleyway that's currently there, really, Sherri, I know Sherri is, Owen is on board and sent a letter in, and she's in favor of this vacation. And to the north of the corner is owned by my clients, and that's really the majority of the road. I mean, there's a very small sliver on the north end of that road that is, would affect, you know, Mr. Burton. So I think you've got the majority, the people that own the majority, not own the majority, but have, would have potentially the most access to it would be the property on the corner, Sherri Owen, and then my clients to the north of that property. So I would just like to say that over the years, me and my business partner, Monty Luffy and Scott Delano, we've worked on this corner in the past with different owners back when Mr. Lemon was still alive. And I, so I'll say going all the way back to, say, before 2000, this corner's been looked at for development because it's such a great corner and you have so much, you have a lot of traffic at that intersection. Sometimes there's too much traffic. When the city came in and put the barriers up to where, when you're going north on Washington Avenue anymore and you can't take a left into that, to that Iverville or Iverville Street, you know, that greatly affected the property and the development of that property. We tried and tried and almost had under contract with the Walgreens and a CVS when Mr. Lemon was alive. So, but they turned down the site. And I would say that Mr. Cardoff, who are, who's the developers right now, they've talked to many, many, many tenants for this property. And I can tell you that we've talked to many tenants for this property because we've done a lot of work up and down Deanville Boulevard. And we've sold a good bit of properties, you know, recently up and down Deanville Boulevard. And there's national retailers that are looking at Ocean Springs now. You've got Chick-fil-A coming in, you've got another retailer coming in, you know, down by the hospital. I know that there's Waffle Houses looking in this market, although they can't afford this land. And there's, there's a bank who's looking in this market, there's coffee shops who are looking, you know, to be along Deanville Boulevard, right in that, you know, main stretch from, say, the bridge on. But several of them have turned it down just because it's not the best access. So to have really a publicly traded company, I believe they're publicly traded or they're not, have a publicly traded company come in who's willing to take down this property and improve this property, I would say is something that the city should greatly consider because it's not, it's a great corner, but it's not perfect by any means. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Name and address, please.
Hi, Melissa Burton with Talke and Sweet, 11th and Washington Avenue. I just want to quickly go over a couple of points. First, just to make it clear, because I know that there's been conflicting information here, there are only two property owners that are not part of the development deal. And both of those property owners oppose the vacation. Everybody else that they're saying, all the property owners approved the vacation, they're part of the development. They're the ones whose property is being purchased for the development. The two property owners that are not part of the development that are affected by this oppose the vacation. Also, I want to point out that using the vacation of the east-west alley to justify this vacation is just not legally sound. It's not apples to apples. That alley did actually have a tree in the middle of it. This one does not. And that vacation was also approved based off of fraudulent information, and it's probably need to be disputed anyway. We are not opposed to development. I know that there's talk about whether or not there needs to be a gas station on that corner. Honestly, we don't care. If it's done for it, it's done for it. We are not opposed to any development. We just need to maintain safe access for commercial traffic. And that includes the delivery trucks. Just like the bear was quoted on the WLX clip when he was talking about the MDOT work that's going to be done at that intersection, he very clearly said that we need to take care of businesses and make sure that delivery trucks have access. We currently don't have access. We have been requesting. We've been putting in requests from Public Works to have that alley maintained. They cut the grass, that's a start. The city is spending money already on maintaining that alley. City code actually requires that commercial property have alley access. We are required to have access in addition to the one access that we have right now. So vacating that alley would remove access, which would be against the city's own code. The access easement that has been proposed by the developers, and we've made it clear to them, it's, it's not an acceptable resolution to the problem. Giving us an access easement is significantly substandard to having a dedicated right-of-way. An access easement across their parking lot, across somebody else's property, dodging traffic of people walking between pumps and a C-store, that's just not the same as having an alley with dedicated right-of-way. Our, our commercial traffic shouldn't have to dodge their pedestrian customers as well as their vehicular customers. We also have no interest in dumping our commercial traffic into a residential neighborhood. So having access to church is not something that we are interested in. We don't want to put commercial traffic onto church. It's a residential area. We just want to make sure that our commercial traffic does have safe access. And as the woman that spoke before, that it's about future opportunities for our property. Right now, our tenant is a CPA practice. There's not a lot of traffic coming through right now. But it will not always be that. It will be something different later. And we've ran into situations in the past and are going to continue to run into situations where if I have a semi truck that's needing to make a delivery to our commercial property, there's no access. There's nowhere to leave. They would actually have to throw it in reverse and back up onto Washington Avenue, which is extremely dangerous. So we're not opposed to development. We're not opposed to coming up with a different resolution, but vacating the alley and going for this access easement across somebody else's business property is not a viable solution.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else in the audience? Name and address.
James Woods, 805 Cambridge Drive. As I sit and I've listened to all the conversations I've had here, one of the key things is we got to use common sense and make a decision for what's best for Ocean Springs. And if you know anything about semi trucks getting into closed areas, that's a big problem. All you got to do is go down to MLK where you got a semi truck that parked right there in the roadway. And people are trying to get up and down from Deanville up to Development Street. We need to go back in and use common sense and make an decision and recommendations to the Board of Alderman as to what is best in the interest of all the citizens of Ocean Springs, not just some. And when we sit down and lay our head down at night, we want to make definite sure we make the correct decision that God will be pleased with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got a question for Wade. So Wade, you stated that a request to improve the alley has been made to the city. When was that request made? Do you have that information?
Don't know there's a question. I would know that in talking with the building official this morning, the request had been made to, I think, have the owner of the boatyard move the boats off the property. As far as a request to improve, actually make improvements to it, I'm not aware of that. That would, that might be a question more for the city's project manager.
Yes.
Sounds like that was a pretty hard lightning strike.
Now we're back offline. Well, in the public of transparency, they've, people out there watching. Hold, hold, hold a second. I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we temporarily take a recess until the internet and phone service gets back on. Do I have a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
It was that, you said what?
Yeah, just until the...
We do it as much as we're concerned. Technology, technology is very, very needed. You don't want to...
We got the thumbs up and we're back. No, I'm just saying. All right. Yeah, got you. Thank you. All right.
It would work. You got it, Elizabeth?
Plug it, re-plug it.
Our server has to restart too. You can kind of keep that.
Yeah, unless it's going to get worse. It's going to be just like last night. So you have... All right.
Hey Joey, we had a lightning strike and all the power shut off down here. Yeah, so we were running, so everything else is out badly. I'm trying to convince them to let me use it for my cell phone and just turn it to your speaker.
Yeah, just take, take one of the, yeah, take one of the microphones and put it up to your phone.
Okay, Joey, you're on. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you so much.
Make a motion to go out of recess? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right. Back to Kevin's question to you, Wade. Yeah, so you haven't received anything?
No, nothing about making improvements to it.
Or reopening it or, okay.
No. Just in the way of doing maintenance and making the boats off.
Okay. Jazz, if you have any comment?
One thing that strikes me is, as much as whether the city's in compliance or not to provide an alleyway, on paper they have.
We got to flood Joey here so he can stick up.
Okay.
Let's just come back on line.
Yeah.
Tell her I'm calling.
Hey Joe, we're going to hang up the phone back. Joe, can we get this thing from?
I'm here. Okay, thank you. Continue.
So whether, you know, regardless of whether the city's obligated to supply an alleyway or not, on paper there is one. It's not open for traffic. People cannot drive on it, turn around on it, or do anything on it, and it's been that way for over 100 years. So I'm not sure quite what they're going with.
Yeah, I got you. So I mean, I'm going back to the public need. So what is the public need for us to vacate this alley? The one thing I see in the city's benefit is it'll allow development of a previously undeveloped land. And I mean, people have been trying to develop this property for, what, at least the last 20 years. This seems to be the hang-up is this alley, I think it's in the city's benefit and in the public interest to allow this land to move forward in development. I think the second part of it is compensation of damages. Because the alley has never been used, has never been developed, has never been an actual alleyway, I don't see any diminishment of access to any of the properties, and I don't see any diminishment of value to any of the properties, so I don't think there's any damages involved. I think the developer, I shouldn't say the developer, the people that are trying, that have asked for the vacation, offering an easement, whether it's used or not, negates any argument about additional access in the future. That access will be provided. If it hasn't been provided in the past, it will be provided in the future. That's my opinion.
All right. Marshall.
I agree with that, those comments.
Joey. Yeah. Hey, do you have any comment on the vacation of the alleyway? I agree with what was just said.
All righty.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a recommendation to approve the vacation of the unnamed right-of-way north from Deanville Boulevard between Parcels, bear with me, 60119-058.000, 60119-056.000, 60119-054.000, 60119-048.000, and 60119-050.000, with the condition that an ease, an access easement be provided to 1109 Washington Avenue.
I recommend it in, in the need of the public good, as discussed.
Yes, yeah, the public good and compensation of damages as discussed previous in the motion.
So your motion is to still require an easement access just the vacation of the access going forward?
Yeah, vacation of the access easement with the condition that an access easement be provided to 1109 Washington Avenue.
I'm going to give, Burton's would like to say one more thing before we...
We've got a motion. Is there a second and then we can take up some more discussion?
Yeah, do I have a second?
Second. Joey, second.
All right. So Kevin made the motion, Joey seconded it. Let's, I want to open.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. I hear, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Kyle. Me and you haven't spoken about this matter, but I hear what, I hear what y'all are saying, but I think where, I think where the disconnect on this is, is that you are actually putting the city in a position that you are creating liability for the city because you're asking an existing property owner to actually move his traffic across another landowner's property, okay? That, that has pedestrian and vehicular traffic. And so the thing is, that easement, that property could be sold for years from now and then there's, and you can look in the, you can look in the case law, I've already done some looking in the case law as far as what properties are sold, how easements can, can be canceled. Okay? So again, I think that a, a dedicated easement not across the developer's property is probably the proper thing to do and, and reduces liability not only for the customers, for his customers as well as the city. And so I say that with all due respect to you, as it relates to it, because I think we can have a, we can disagree and have a civil conversation and, and I respect that, but I think that, I think it's a little short-sighted as far as just saying, because in, in your motion, you just said provide 1109 with an easement. Who decides what that easement looks like? There's, there's no definition in, in your motion. And so, and so, and so that, and so that, you know, that will probably, if there's a dispute between the end of developers related to what an easement looks like, then that involves the city in judicial review, and I'm not looking for that.
I understand where you're coming from. If you look at it from my opinion, and the way I view this, right now you have one access point to your property. If anything, we are providing additional access to your property, additional ways for ingress, egress, emergency services, deliveries, the things that you brought up. So, I am adding to your access, I am not taking away from your access, in my opinion.
Kevin, let me, let me clarify this and everything. So, your motion says that another easement has to be put on the property. That easement, would that belong to the property owner on Highway 90, or would that be the cit, turned over to the city as an easement access to Mr. Burton's property?
Well, I mean, the, the motion is to vacate...
To vacate one...
And the access easement must be provided, and that's provided by the property owner.
Yeah, but what... It's not gonna, it's not being used now, it's never gonna be used, maybe the top 10 feet of the easement, but not, I don't see why you'd give him access to the whole easement. That just puts, you know, a problem for the developer. Right? The developer wants to do away with the, we're doing away with the easement so they can put, do whatever they want with it, across that easement.
Not the city's easement, they will provide a separate easement. So there's a document that they showed a proposed easement, the developer, to provide access, additional access.
Can I make one other...
Yes, Mr. Burton?
I don't wanna interrupt. The, the, the reason why it's not being used as an access point now is like the lady had said previously behind me, is that it hasn't been used in the past, but that doesn't necessarily mean that in the future that, that, that access is not gonna be needed. There needs to be dedicated access to whoever, if it's me that owns that property, or someone else that owns that property. And so, the thing is, I think, I think from the standpoint of, of looking at it currently, no, that hasn't been used as a, as a alley right now, because it's not been necessary. I just, I started off my conversation with you related to the layers, quote, related to empty, you know, as far as they keep creeping farther and farther, you know, towards our building. And so, from the standpoint that, right now, no, there is not any, any, any need for access right there. And I have made a, and I'll just declare, Bob, for Public Works, I have made a, I have made requests to Public Works for multiple months now, related to make that roadway roadworthy. Also, I've made multiple requests to Public Works as far as them to clean the alley, okay? I would go in there and clean it myself, I'm not worried about the cogs, but I own the property.
Alright. Alright, Mr. Burton, thank you. I see both points, you know, I can't...
I'd clarify. You, you can choose to require... I'm not that tall. You can choose to require the applicant to provide an easement on the diagram that was attached to my letter that... Close to three. You could modify that, just to do the most out portion of it, whatever you wanna do with that.
Modify your motion to do that?
I don't know that it can be dedicated as a city right-of-way, because then you gotta bring it to the middle of private property. I would point out that typically, when the city vacates a public alley, the compensation is, the property owners that have joined the property, the alley, each get ownership of the alley up to the center line of the alley, that's their compensation. So the people on the right side of the alley get half of the alley, and people on the left side of the alley get half of the alley, and that can be the just compensation. I'm not saying you can't, or you shouldn't require another form of access, I'm just telling you that, that's typically what happens. The, like I said, the, what was proposed is an easement. If they choose not to use it, then we'll have to use it. If they're worried about liability, then don't use it, don't let their customer use it. It's gonna be part of the development, there's gonna be public in that development all day long, hopefully. So that's all I'd say on that.
Now, you're talking, you're talking about the diagram where you have a proposed access easement, right?
Yes, and when it goes down, that one, when it goes down to Beenville, over to Washington, and over the church. You could modify that in any form that you wanna modify that, or you won't have to take that whole time. They said they don't wanna go to church, so you could cut that portion of it out. You don't want it to go to Washington, you could cut that portion of it out.
Yeah, I think that, the motion as is, is that just that they provide an access easement. I think what the access easement looks like is when we actually get, you know, a plat and those things, and that's when we say, alright, an access easement had to be provided, then we figure out what it looks like. That is beneficial to most property owners.
The only thing I'll say to your motion, you need to have it where the easement access goes with the property P.I.N. address for that property.
P. 1109 Beenville?
Yeah.
I mean, Washington Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and you're right, I mean, once the plans are submitted to the city, and the city's gonna have their requirements of what has to happen to approve the development, so that, that's probably the point in time when the easement will be defined.
Right. I can't read that. Yeah, which one is the P.I.N. for? Alright, so Will, do I need to start a new motion?
I, I would amend your motion, just amend, same motion, but amend it to that P.I.N. number, the easement as to that P.I.N.
Alright, amendment to the motion, replace 1109 Washington Avenue with P.I.N. 6011-9042.000.
That's motion will come on any second.
Second was Joey.
I'm here, but again?
Yep. Alright, we're gonna do a, a roll call on this one. Joseph?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Joey?
Aye.
Unanimous? So when will this be advertised on the boards?
I think, or, or barely, a... I didn't want this, would not be a public hearing at the board meeting, which we would be on next week's board agenda.
So this is gonna, this is gonna go on the consent agenda?
It's gonna go on the consent agenda, that's correct, that's correct. Unless you would like to make a motion otherwise, instructors otherwise.
Alright.
I think this doesn't need to go on the consent agenda, I think this needs to...
Well, we could make it specific that it's a, under, have a separate vote, under our new business.
Yeah.
I guess we have some options there.
Do you need us to make a motion on this?
Yeah. Kevin, do you wanna make that motion?
Yeah. Make a motion, agenda item, agenda one, agenda item number one, when going to the Board of Alderman, be dedicated a public hearing and not be placed on the consent agenda.
Alright, roll call on that?
Joseph?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Joey?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Unanimous, alright. So that will be on July's first meeting, alright, thank you. Alright. Alright, moving on. So, hopefully we have no more lightning strikes. Alright, so, moving on to Spring Plaza, public hearing for 1515 Beenville, requesting approval for a minor subdivision, three lot split. Wade?
This is the, you said Spring Plaza subdivision? First off, is the applicant in the, in the audience? Thank you, okay, right, for sure. This, the request is for a minor subdivision, but it's creating three lots of this existing shopping center. Those who are familiar with it, this is where a former grocery store was, they're in Aldi, there are other developments in there, including a tire store, and some restaurants and other things of that sort. The proposal is to create three lots, I think as shown in the packet in your book. Also, to, um, and look at the shopping center currently as shared parking lot and shared access drive between the...
What are our parking lot access across that?
The applicant has provided a proposed private covenant, signed private covenants, that establish parking, access, and also utility spaces across the lots. Those are, that's great, that's exactly what we're looking for, we find out that those are private easements, they can be changed by the lot owners. It's a staff's recommendation that the subdivision plat for this designate both the parking lot, and drive aisles, and the utility as common areas or easements, so that it's assured that there is access, common parking for all the tenants in there, all the businesses, and also access across the parking lot to the public street. And I think that kinda concludes what I have to say, and there's multiple motions to approve it or deny it, if you so choose, and the applicant's argument is here if you have questions for him.
Anyway, commissioners?
We need to get this into the minutes?
Yeah. Was it provided in our packet from the...
Yeah, I think it's in the...
Yeah, but was it sent out in the...
No, it's not.
So make a motion to admit the... White, Sir Kaplan, Polaski, and Zubor, P.C., restricted covenants and reciprocal access utility and pylon sign easement agreement into the minutes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Aye.
We need to go into public hearing.
Yeah, we're, I wanted to, commissioners have any comment for...
Didn't we have questions last time about firewalls and...
Yes, yeah. I discussed that with the building official, and they would not, in the current configuration of the shopping center, because the businesses are the same category, same class, they would not require firewalls between them for that purpose, because they are of the same building category. Different categories, that would be a different situation, but as they are sitting right now, they're the same class, so no firewall.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Alright, do you have a motion to go into public hearing?
Seven seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Unanimous? Alright, we're open to a public hearing, does the applicant like to speak? Name an address, please?
Name is, copy magic, property address is 515 Beenville. Thank you gentlemen, for making time to take Elizabeth, for helping me. Nope.
Just gotta talk closer to it.
Gotta talk closer. I think it was worn out from the last gentleman. I, yeah, hopefully this is pretty simple. We're, we're proud to hold the shopping center, it's a pretty recent purchase for us, we're very happy in Ocean Springs, looking to bring more businesses, two Ocean Springs and a shopping center, and this will help us just manage it more efficiently, as I've talked about. After answering any questions, the...
So, question is, so y'all are gonna split it into three parcels and everything, so you're gonna retain ownership of all three parcels?
That's correct.
Okay. What is the main reason for, you say to maintain the shopping center? We do know that Aldi's coming into the shopping center, normally they like being separate on to themselves, so could you explain a little bit more to that?
To which point? I mean, the...
The reason for splitting it into three parcels and still retaining ownership of all three parcels?
Yeah, so the leases that are in place at that shopping center, Aldi inherited the Winixie lease, I think there's 12 or 13, or 14 amendments to it, Winixie's been there a long time. So basically, it's like what you said, Aldi really likes being in a single tenant building, where they have a certain standard of maintenance, and they usually do it themselves as well, but here, they're part of the shopping centers, so it'd be nice to have a piece which is kinda the Aldi piece, and then kinda everybody else, whether, what their lease says they have to reimburse for, what the landlord obligations are for are different, for example, the landlord obligations that are on Petsense are very different than the ones that are on Aldi. So it'd be nice, we have this at several other shopping centers where it's fairly standard, where there's a couple different, you know, a couple different parcels, that's really it.
Okay. Commissioners, any comment, questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Do I have anybody in the audience for or against? The minor subdivision split?
Okay. Make a motion above, public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Unanimous? Alright.
I'm gonna think, but the applicant stated of providing more management efficiency. I don't see anything from the city that says this is problematic in any way, and I think with the restricted covenants and the easement agreement that is being provided, I think we've addressed all of the parking lot, access, electricity, sewage, and all those other kinda nitpicky facts out there that, that we were concerned about. So from last time to this time, I, I think we are in a place where I could approve this.
Alrighty. Joseph? Marshall? Joey?
Yes, I'm okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a... Go ahead Joey.
Recommend approval of mall catch and literary plot to subsidize existing building and parking lot into three lots located at 1515 Beenville Boulevard.
Second. Alright, we're gonna do a roll call. Joseph?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Joey?
Aye.
Alright, unanimous? And this is gonna be heard on...
Public hearing.
So July 1st.
Alright, thank you. Alright, moving on. So, we have... North side of Beenville between Lakeview Drive and Mississippi, Highway 57, requesting... Yeah, thank you.
For more family dwellings.
Alright. Alrighty. Wade?
This is a conditional use permit, this not a zoning change for the property, it's in the C.H. region of Commercial District, and the whole, the reason that apartments are allowed by conditional use permit is to make sure that this is a use that's compatible with the character of the area, and if this were a, a larger developed commercial center, in my business situation, or access purposes otherwise, that might not want residential use in the middle of it, or have some limitations on it. In this case, this is a, on the eastern fringe of the area, it is adjacent to the existing canvas apartments that were recently developed, I think maybe three or four years ago, so in terms of use, it is consistent with the, the character of the area. In particular case of the, the site plan for this one, in C.L.D. in the report, the plan has apartment...
In particular case of the site plan for this one, in CLD, in the report, the plan has apartment development on the, say, rear, about two-thirds of the property, when they're leaving the furniture areas in two parcels set aside for future commercial development. So that also is sharing the access drive to it, so that it would be more integrated into the development that does occur of this property between that and the future retail use. So from that standpoint, it is more integrated into the area, and it's consistent with the campus apartments being able to the west of the east of this. But also want to point out that this was in the area covered by the apartment moratorium. However, the moratorium had a one-year lifespan on it, it expired June 4th, and it's not yet been extended by the board of aldermen. So our position is that the moratorium is no longer effective for this. So that in mind, I don't know, I have representatives from the developer here to answer questions about the, some of the details of it, or I can answer questions you might have regarding the specific business in this case.
I've always got a question for you, Wade.
Okay. Right, I'll always answer.
Alright, so just to clarify, this conditional use permit allows multifamily properties to be built on this CH-zoned piece of land. It is not tied to the diagram on page 103. So if we give them the conditional use and this diagram changes, do they have to come back for a new conditional use, or does that, like, carry forward to the new plans?
Well, it can be, it can be carried forward if with some minor amendments to it. Say it's reducing the number of dwelling units. An increase in the number of dwelling units, that would something that would be, need to come back to y'all for amendment. But if it's a decrease in the number of dwelling units, the number of buildings, increase of the open space...
And if that's set out in the UDC, right way, minor amendments and major amendments?
Right, that's what I'm saying, there's differences in the UDC for minor amendments and major amendments, and we would apply those criteria to this. Generally, if it's less intense, it's a minor amendment. If it's more intensity, then would be something that would need to come back to y'all for approval of an amended plan.
Alright, thank you for that clarification and getting it on record.
Alrighty, Marshall? Anything?
Motion to go into public hearing, you want me to make it?
Yep.
Make a motion to go into public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Alright, open to public hearing. Applicant would like to get up and speak. Name and address, please.
Trace of Wood Engineering, 1241 Cora Boulevard, Beenvale, Alabama. I'll ask for any engineering questions about the development. Again, we are immediately adjacent to campus apartments on our east side. We're planning to have some access to the north end of the property, so it'll be kind of landbound if we go forward. And we have will serve letters for utilities. We've been in initial talks with MDOT to address this development and coordinate with their future expansion of the property.
Alrighty. One question I do have is on this rendering right here, there is no detention or retention. Is that going to be located on the property to the north? Tentatively?
We haven't looked at that. Potential will be either on-site or a shared piece of property to the north.
Okay.
And of course, we can discharge to the major drainage ditch to our west.
Any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Opening the floor to people in favor or against.
I make a motion to go into public hearing.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Kevin, any comment?
I mean, as we've been reviewing the comprehensive plan, especially going through the demographic section of that, I think there is a very clear need in Ocean Springs for this type of housing. I think a lot of kids go off to college, and they don't come back because there's not affordable housing for them. I think small families and new families don't have the type of housing that's affordable and available to them in Ocean Springs. So I think there's a clear need for this type of development, and I think it's the right location for it.
Alrighty. Joseph?
I think the location's good. Of course, this is not a detailed drawing, I'm interested to see how the parking's going to work, but that's for another time.
Marshall?
No, it looks to me like it's very similar to the one to the east of it, so...
Joey, any comment?
No, I like it.
Alrighty.
I do appreciate the incorporation of retail access along the highway.
Yep. Alrighty. Do I have a motion?
Recommend approval of a conditional use permit to permit to build family development within the CH regional commercial district on the north side of Beenvale Boulevard, C-I-D-E-N-S-C-1104-005.
Second.
Alrighty, let's do a roll call. Joseph?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Joey?
Aye.
All in favor? Unanimous? Alright. Moving on, and that was going to be on...
That is set for the June 17th.
June 17th.
June 17th, 4th, 11th, 12th.
Thank you. Alright. Moving on to a public hearing for 3419 Beenvale Boulevard, requesting approval of a commercial subdivision final plat.
I'm actually going to open up this one.
Alright, Lesmith, there you go.
So bear with me. The applicant is requesting approval of a Twin Pines subdivision, a commercial, for a commercial subdivision for a final plat containing four lots. In the diagram, as you have the four lots, there's only two that actually have, that are wanting to be developed as of right now. Lot one and two are still vacant, we don't know what those are going to be proposed. The sketch plat was done December 3rd, 2004, and then the preliminary plat was also approved February 4th.
This is a, it's a commercial subdivision of the Prophet Street. The street is under construction. Building permit for the publicly listed on the westernmost block, it's already been approved, it's surely under construction, and the site plan for Chick-fil-A on the other side of Central Street is under review right now, so that's, those are the two current tenants on it. Again, there are two other lots that will be available, and I would also point out that the street extends from the Beenvale Furniture Road up to Groveland. And we'll be reviewing the site plans, for the site plans of both, of only the Chick-fil-A in the future, near future.
Okay. It was mentioned a while back when it came to everything, that they will be providing a retention-detention on the property. Exactly looking at the preliminary plat and everything, where is it going to be located?
It's in the northwest corner of, so it'll actually be, beyond the, close to the Groveland Furniture, on the western edge of the subdivision.
So on lot one.
Yeah, the western part of lot one is a common area.
And I guess that would be, yeah, common area.
Correct.
Alright, cool. Alright, thank you.
And all the representatives from the developer are here, if you have questions for them too.
Alright, thank you, Wade. Thank you, Lesmith.
I have a ask by obligatory question. So on the preliminary plat and the major sketch plat, did the road already go all the way to Groveland, or is that just on the final plat?
It was always, it was in the sketch plat, by recollection.
And we did discuss potential impacts to that neighborhood. And I think, I think we all agreed that there's nothing there.
It's already in, you can see it, they cut it all level and everything else.
No, I know, I just wanted to make sure we had discussed it.
Yeah. Alrighty. Do I have a motion to go to open for public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, unanimous? Alright. With that, I'd like to get up and speak on the project.
Good evening. My name is Garrett Baker with Atlantic Coffee Group, 3262 Old Show Road, Beaville, Alabama. We've been at this for a while, nothing's changed up to this point, aside from the construction activities. So I could refer to DM for any questions?
Alright, thank you. Alright. Is there anybody in the audience for or against the project on Beenvale? Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Alright, unanimous? Alright.
I'm just going to go ahead and make a recommendation to approve the final plat of the Twin Pines commercial subdivision.
Located at 3419 Beenvale Boulevard.
Do I have a second? Second. Alright, I'm going to do a roll call. Joseph?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Marshall? Joey?
Aye.
Alright. Unanimous? Thank you, and this is going to be heard on when?
Yeah, June 17th, Tuesday.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearing for, located at 4005 Government Street, requesting for a minor subdivision of a two-lock subdivision located within R1 low-density single family, and it's Rowan Williams. Wade, or...
The applicant is asking to do a minor subdivision approval. They're proposing to take a single lot and to divide it into two parcels. This minor subdivision was actually done in 2007, the exact same, and was approved due to not being taken to actual Jackson County, getting it recorded. Since it's been so long, it is now null and void, so they are just asking basically for the same plan that they came before in 2007. Nothing has changed about it, but going, they have to come just because it's been so long.
Alright. Thank you, Elizabeth. Our commissioners have any comments before we open for a public hearing?
Make a motion to go into public hearing?
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Aye.
Alright. With that, I'd like to get up and speak.
My name is Larry Rums, 8910 Howard Avenue, Boise. This parcel, this parcel was partly lot split back, I believe, in 2007, and it was newly recorded, from what I understand, but I think the parcel that we're looking at tonight, of course, was sold at the time, so he's asking to split out one more piece of this property that fronts Perryman Road and Government Street. It's obviously going to be called a minor subdivision, since it was part of a split before. So there are utilities on Perryman Road that run in front of this second parcel, so there shouldn't be an issue with that in the future, but mostly this is a state decision and not a decision to mark the property at this point in time.
Alrighty.
The lot split was actually done in 2005, that's why they're having to do a minor subdivision, because you're going to do one lot split per lot.
Correct. Yeah, and any more than that comes a minor subdivision.
Yes.
Alrighty. So the application, that was done in 2007 and everything, this is just basically updated, so, alright, so our only comment would be, this goes through, go take it to court, file it.
We'll follow through.
Please, thank you. Alrighty, thank you. Alright, opening the floor to anybody that is in favor or objection to the lot split on Government, 4005 Government.
Motion to close public hearing?
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Alrighty. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to recommend approval of a minor subdivision plat to subdivide the existing lot into two lots located at 4005 Government Street.
Second.
Alright. Do a roll call. Joseph?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Joey?
Aye.
Alright, unanimous? Thank you, and then when is this going to be heard on?
I'm just looking at this thing. I believe this will, this will require a public hearing, because it's, this is not the final plat like the one previously, but this will...
So this will be on...
Will be public hearing, so it will be the...
July 1st.
July 1st meeting, correct.
Alright, thank you. Alrighty. Moving on. So, this is a public hearing to Cell Street located at 132 Pine Drive and 140 Pine Drive, requesting a vacation of a right-of-way of R1 low-density single family. Wade, or Elizabeth? Elizabeth?
This is two vacates, City Right-of-Way, Cell Street. It runs between two parcels, which are 132 Pine Drive and also 140 Pine Drive. If I'm not mistaken, this right-of-way is being used as an access to driveways for 132 Pine Drive. And we spoke with Sarah Harris, and she said ultimately they do not see it ever being developed.
Alright, thank you, Elizabeth. Commissioners have any comments for planning before we move it to open for public hearing?
So, looking at the map, that's immediately adjacent to the creek, right?
Correct.
Okay.
There's a parcel in between that and the bayou. There's another driveway located right next to it. So, there's another...
There's another, this is not very good...
Yeah, exactly. ...depiction. Okay, so there's another parcel...
Back here.
...just to the north of it, which there's a house located at 140 Pine Drive.
So 140 Pine Drive, that's a flag lot?
No, it goes from the pine all the way back, so... So this, this right-of-way is strictly on the north side of 132 Pine.
Okay. Alright, got it, thank you.
Mistress, keep it on, the same applies, it's another vacate of a street or alley, so those two items of passage. All against?
Alright. Thank you. Alright, do I have a motion to go to public hearing?
So moved.
Alright.
Second.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Alright. Name and address?
Jacqueline Ridley, I'm one of the owners of Blunt 32 Pine. Good afternoon, everybody. I want to congratulate each of you, because you just discovered that the city owns a piece of property that the city did not even know it owned, until Patrick Martino and all of his diligence discovered that there was a Cell Street that apparently nobody has even taken into consideration since 1950, before probably most of us in this room were even born. So, thank you, Patrick, for creating a problem that now we all get to solve, but you know, that's what keeps life interesting. As Mr. Norman indicated a moment ago, municipalities, the city of Ocean Springs, has the ability to vacate a public street if it's no longer needed for municipal purposes or for public use. Well, this particular piece of property has been used exclusively for the driveway of one, or at least partially, of 132 Pine for over 50 years. The prisoners lived in this home before they passed, and we purchased it from the estate, and it has always had a driveway on it, I mean, since I was a child. That driveway has always been right there. Now we have discovered this issue, and, and so what we are asking is that you all vacate the street so that it can be used for the purpose that everybody has... the street so that it can be used for the purpose that everybody has sort of understood it to have been used for, for, you know, however long. And in fact, if you go to Jackson County web mapping, the county thinks that we own this property, so, you know, there we go, we've been paying taxes, you know, on a pro rata basis on this property that the city apparently has a claim to, and what I would speculate is that there was a street, at some point, someone made the decision to vacate this, and, you know, back in 1950, 1952, when these plats were recorded, you know, something fell through the cracks. It happens all the time. You can ask Patrick, he said this is one of the most unique and interesting cases that he's seen. I've spoken to Donovan Scruggs, he would tell you the same thing, that this is just very unusual, and in all likelihood, it's just the result of somebody having made a mistake, you know, I don't do math publicly, but a long time ago. So, to satisfy the standards set forth in section 2137-7, Cell Street has never been built or used for public access, it's no longer needed. You could develop it if you want to, one, you know, you have the driveway which represents the only, you know, access point to 132 Pine that exists unless you go in, and I don't know if you gentlemen or Ms. Hynell on the phone, if y'all can visualize this property, but it's kind of set up on a hill a little bit, it's got a nice beautiful retaining wall, and so if you were to say, well, we need a driveway that we can exclusively control, it's gonna, it would require us to cut into that retaining wall, potentially damaging one of the most majestic magnolia trees in Ocean Springs, which to me, that would be the travesty, but in any event, so going back through the, the components here, it's never been built or used for public access. The street is not used for any municipal purpose, there's no utilities, no emergency access, no drainage, except for the fact that it's kind of like a, a little, little creek that nobody would develop if, if you could. Keeping it would create an undue burden for the owner of 132 Pine because you've sacrificed the ability to have exclusive control over the driveway, which is sort of an important thing to have control over, right? The public would experience no harm here, again, the street has, for all intents and purposes, been abandoned by virtue of its actual usage over the last 50-plus years, and functionally, it's already private, no one is using it. It wouldn't create any harm to the adjacent property owner, she's here this evening, in fact, she initially consented to the petition, which she made the decision to withdraw, but it ultimately does not create any harm to her as well, and so it, it seems clear that this was just a mistake made, you know, before my time. The city didn't realize it even owned the street, you know, again, now we've all become aware of it, and once you know something, you gotta act accordingly, and, let's see, and I think that's all, I mean, it's a pretty, to me, it's pretty straightforward, I don't think we have like the drama and flair, maybe some of the other things that get to come before you all, and what we would ask is that, you know, the planning commission recommends to the Board of Aldermen that the Cell Street be vacated and then allow it to work through the process as it normally works through the process. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. My husband, who is the co-owner of the property, is also here, so, you know, usually he just knows I talk a lot, so he lets me do the talking sometimes, but we're happy to answer any questions, otherwise, I'd like to reserve the right to make any rebuttal remarks at the end in the event there are other comments to be made.
Thank you, Jacqueline. All righty, um, looking at it, I'm familiar with this property, from what I was always told, the reason why that, going back to somebody that's familiar with Ocean Springs, why the Christmases had that, was that there's two parcels there, the front parcel and the rear parcel. It was a right of way was to get to the back parcel back then. Are y'all, do y'all have intent to collapse both parcels into one?
So, it's not been something that we've discussed, I mean, but certainly, it would appear to me that by vacating the right of way to Cell Street, it would almost indirectly, you know, eliminate the ability to do something with that second parcel. It's certainly not our intent to, you know, to develop it, I know that's a dirty word these days in Ocean Springs, but that's not, you know, that's not the intent, we've not thought about it, I mean, if, if there is a contingency in the planning commission's recommendation to the Board of Aldermen, that is something that we take into account, then certainly, we would, you know, do that and be prepared to speak to it at the Board of Aldermen when they ultimately make the decision.
Yeah, the biggest thing that the city cannot get into is making landlocked pieces of parcels. Just because you own both pieces and you wanted to sell one piece and not the other, then you have a piece that's landlocked. I'm gonna get commissioners' comments and everything on it, and go from there. Joseph?
From the alley discussions, fair compensation was from the center line going left and right, so are we talking about her property taking the whole street then? Is that what we're talking about?
That's a question that we're gonna have to get to. Kevin, you gonna weigh in on the comment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm working, yeah, I'm concerned about the access to, what is it, 340?
All right, we're gonna move on to anybody in favor or against? Name and address, please.
My name is Margaret Cawker, I live at 140 Pine, I've lived there since 2012. I'm a nurse, so I'm more familiar with medical terms, not legal terms, so bear with me. I do appreciate y'all because I've been up since five in the morning at my job, and I know you guys have your jobs and you're here serving my duty, so I wanna thank you. My biggest concern is that property is absolutely beautiful, it's just full of trees, birds, turtles. The property that they're talking about is, my house is here, their house is here, and the center is blocked.
Stay from my side, just for the luxury.
I'm sorry, so the center is a beautiful tree line with a creek running through it, and these animals all live there. So, there's turtles just living throughout there, and by allowing them access, I'm afraid because of what I've seen in the city recently, that people don't care about nature, they don't care about the animals, they don't care about the birds, and what will happen is, right now, it's peaceful. You sell that, they're not gonna build on it, they have already purchased something else. They're gonna sell to someone else who may develop it to more, filling it maybe the whole lot, I have no idea what they're gonna do, but right now, that property is a stream with pine trees, magnolia trees, turtles, birds, everything that's beautiful about Ocean Springs. I feel like I'm the luckiest girl, 'cause I get to live on that property. And I'm afraid whoever buys it, their intention is not gonna be to keep it natural, which that's their right, it's their property, I just don't want it to encroach on my peaceful little heaven right there, 'cause that's what I love about Ocean Springs. And if you go to Inner Harbor or my webpage or my Facebook, all you see is posts of trees and birds and pelicans, and that is like the best part of Ocean Springs. Everyone thinks it's government with all the bars and everything, but it's not, it's Inner Harbor Park with all the trees and the animals. So, that's my only concern, is that whoever they sell it to or encroach onto that stream, onto that green patch, maybe a street, I have no idea, I'm a nurse, I'm not an attorney, I don't know what they legally can and can't do, but that is very, very concerning and heartbreaking to me if they were to put anything on that green piece of land. Do you have any questions for me? Do you wanna see my pictures?
Thank you, and everything, anybody else?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
I'm Stacy Bruceard, I live at 130 Pine Drive, I'm the adjacent home to the property that they own. What she didn't mention about the property is it is a stream that does end in wetlands, and that does drain south to the harbor. So, if you fill that in, I mean, that's, well, I mean, I don't even know if it would be allowed as far as permits, but it is wet 365 days a year. It's a massive, massive stream, as you wanna call it. It's not an alley, it's not a street as they are referring to it, it's wet 365 days a year, and it does drain, so that's really important, and that's been there. Also, that easement does not cut through their driveway, that was there long before that property was built. Their driveway cuts through that easement, just wanna make that clear, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
Yes, Eric Nichols, 132 Pine, I'm one of the co-owners, and I'm sorry there's so much disinformation in the city lately, because there is no desire in the world to develop anything in that...
Sorry.
But there is no desire, no anything to develop the stream. I mean, what, the issue is we have a legal defect where our driveway is not our driveway because of the public road on it. All we're trying to do is just get our driveway back, I mean, I would never touch the string, would never, what we couldn't legally...
You're referring to it as a street.
It is, it's a legal string.
Hold, hold, hold.
You're selling it.
Hey.
So, hey, hold, hold on, I, I wanna kinda get, 'cause we got a problem here, is the county and the city web mapping have claimed that as they've, the Christmases have paid taxes on this alleyway. They have stumbled on a alleyway that had been recorded a long time ago, and they're trying to make it right on one part that they have paid taxes before they have, the Christmases have. I've done a lot of, a little bit of research on this property and talking to people that have been here for a long time, that knew the family and have an understanding of why there is an alleyway there on that property is for the rear parcel. I would like to hear Mr. Nichols finish up, and then y'all are welcome to come back up and...
And, and look, our concern is really just access to the house with the driveway. I love nature like a ton, and I just did, you mentioned lots of property because it has a lot of acreage, because I wanna preserve and keep the nature. We're renovating that house, the house is being renovated, it's not getting torn down, it's not doing anything, nothing is moving towards the creek, the creek is beautiful, like, I mean, it's beautiful, but we don't have a private legal access to our property because there's a public road there. I mean, it's a public road, and that's all we're asking to do is to remove a title defect. I can't even get a loan on the property right now to, to fix it because of the title defect, and so that's it, there, I mean, I probably got three box turtles out of the road this week alone, like, I'm part of a turtle rescue unit, my son and I pick them up out of the street and get them out of the way. I love nature, nobody's developing that creek. I mean, I'd go to jail with the Army Corps of Engineers. Again, I don't know who told you this, but all I'm trying to do, and part of your property is so you get the property you think you own, not so anybody can develop it, but just to remove an actual title defect, and that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, commissioners, I kinda wanna get a legal point on this because that we do have discrepancy with Wade, well, the fact that, you know, the county has not kept up with the, the tax rolls and everything on that, the...
Talking about on GIS mapping?
GIS mapping. Well, no, calling the county and everything, until this was brought up, you know, from what I understand, the, this right of way, there's been taxes being paid on the square footage of that by both the north part and by the property owners at 132. So, I wanna get a clear understanding of that before moving forward.
I don't know what they're asking legally, I mean, it sounds like, if that's the case, then that's the case, I don't know what they can do. I'm assuming that's why they're asking for a vacated of the street, at least partially, but, you know, I don't, I'm not sure why that's the case, I guess is my answer.
Okay.
There's obviously a mix-up somewhere.
All right, commissioners, do y'all have any questions? I know we got a couple people like to have question out in the audience, normally we don't do this, but I just would like to follow up.
Do you wanna address the compensation?
Item with compensation, that is, if any damages, I mean, it doesn't mean that you have to pay compensation necessarily.
Oh, no, no, I'm not talking that, I'm talking about the center line, half goes to one side, half goes the other side.
Right, and yet, I encourage such discussions.
Right, that's all I'm talking, saying, does it all go to the one property, or are they gonna split it between two properties?
So, for Wade or, so on page 124, the little maps you have drawn, Cell Street does not extend all the way to that back property, is that correct, or is this just a...
That's just that little square, just a representation, and what that is tending to show is the, actually, we put that red, red square on it. The parcel is actually all the way, goes all the way up to Pine Street. You would need to look at the survey on the following pages to see the actual extent of Pine, of Cell Street. As you can see, based on the surveyor, the Cell Street right of way does not extend all the way to the east property line, it stops, what is it, 128 feet?
Short of it.
Short.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was looking at as well. So, you're saying the original intent was to provide access to that back lot, but it doesn't quite reach it?
Let's see. I think you need to look at the, the, page 130, the original plat of 40 Pine subdivision that Cell Street created. At that time, it appear, this is looking at what was done at that time, Cell Street was intended to provide access to the property to the east...
Right.
...in order to develop it, so it would be, it would not be landlocked at that time. That's not how things developed out there, and other issues.
Wait, wait, would they need a block or a permit with Army Corps of Engineers?
Well, that would depend on if it's a...
I mean, if it's regarding the...
If it's a wetland, yes, then any kind of...
For future, future potential development, they would need a permit.
But after you have to go through the Corps of Engineers and other, you know, this is a Department of Quality, but the...
There's great...
More of them will review that.
Then it goes back to that rear parcel, and that rear parcel's P I N 3.
Yeah, if you split it halfway.
Jacqueline, afternoon, have a question?
Yes, sir.
Normally, when we have a easement access, a street that's going to a rear property, myself, I would wanna see both parcels combined into one, so collapse both the INs to prevent the issue of a landlocked parcel. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but that is just my feelings on that. The issue with Corps of Engineers and all that, I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered on that part, need to get some answers on if that right of way has been being paid taxes on it, 'cause there's a lot of questions in that, so, those are the things that need to kinda be looked at.
Okay, so, just to ensure that I understand, is it the commission's position then that y'all are tabling your decision pending?
I don't, I don't know that until...
So, this is just Mr. Henry's?
Yeah, I do have a question for you, though. Do you have the original survey from when you purchased the property?
When we, well, so like the survey that we had done, yeah, well, it's the one that we submitted to planning, it should be as part of the packet, but now, when we, so the property was held by the Christmases for like, since Christ was a child, right?
Right.
So, there, I don't believe that it is under on the survey efforts until, and that's when Patrick discovered a discrepancy between the plat from 1950 where Cell Street was recorded and a plat from 192, 1952 where it wasn't on the 1952 plat for a different, it was a different subdivision.
So, did you purchase from the Christmases?
We purchased from the heirs of the Christmases.
The heirs of the Christmases, so when you purchased the property, there was a survey done?
We had one conducted, yes.
And it did not show Cell Street?
No, well, it shows you're looking...
I'm looking at the one you did when you purchased the property.
That's right, that's right.
So, when you purchased the property, you realized that Cell Street was there, now we're going back and trying to clean it up?
Well, so technically, yes, they've been trying to sell that property for quite some time, and just didn't have any luck, and we felt like, well, this is a pretty easy issue, like, we'll just assume the risk of it. At the time, our plan was to build a home there until a seven acre property on the Voyager, a run lover's money came up, in which case... Voyager, um, a run lover's money came up, in which case it was like, well, they're both beautiful properties, but there's more space, you know, here, not much of the water. So, we said, well, we'll sell this property. Um, and then Luke Riggins is who we're currently under contract to and it's my understanding he intends to build his family's home there or renovate the current home so that they can live there. And I say all that to say, like, so yes, technically, we became aware of it at the time, but the, I mean, the heirs of the Christmases weren't in a position to do it and we just said, you know, we're two lawyers who don't have anything better to do, we'll just, we'll figure it out. And, you know, here we are.
Okay.
I can phone on Tuesday night or whatever it is.
Yeah, so you, you purchased Pine Drive knowing that Sell Street was there, saying we'd try to rectify this afterwards and now you're selling the property to somebody else who's going to renovate it?
Yes.
And you're under contract?
That's correct.
Is any of this Sell Street a condition of the contract?
It is.
It is, okay.
And it's a, I mean, when we went and talked to the bank about getting financing to move forward with construction, it was an issue, like, it, it's going to be, now that we know that this exists, which nobody knew, and it's not like, you know, that.
Yeah, I'm just simply trying to identify the urgency of it. I mean, is this something where we tabled it, it's no big deal or is it, or going to affect contracts?
It could have a material impact.
So, thank you.
Yeah, that's where I was getting at. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any other Commissioners have any comment, questions? All right, Jaclyn, thank you.
I'm just afraid that, I don't want to say.
We've got lots of.
I'm sorry. I don't want to say if people are being honest or dishonest or what's going to happen. I liked your approach. Get it where it is, one parcel, so don't have to worry about them trying to put a road right there, because it will bump right up to my house if they put that road right there and put another house there. I don't know. I would like to see what you suggest would happen. It would make me comfortable. I think it would preserve the land, it would preserve the trees and also for all the animals. That makes a lot of sense to me. It gives me peace of mind that my house is there. I'm still going to have a buffer in that house. And I'm, if they tear it down, whatever, I love the house, but that's their property. They own it, it's not my business. My business is I want to keep what I purchased, what I envisioned for my home the way it is. So, I really like your idea. I think it's fair on both parties and they do have perfectly good access to that other house.
There are.
Because they've lived there for a hundred years. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They've lived there for a hundred years. They've had three cars, boats, RVs. They've had everything possible on that driveway. I promise y'all, very, very, very close to the Christmases. And I sat beneath that Magellan tree for 12 years with them. I'm telling you, there's plenty of access to anything you need there, even the road that's rocks going to that back lot. There's no need for any more access. I understand the technicalities, the legals for them to get a loan. I don't want to stop them from making money or doing whatever they're doing. I just don't want it to affect what's already very, very beautiful there and we already have a bad reputation here for things that are not forthcoming. I just don't want to be like, later, oh, they sold it to Stone, so now they're putting two houses there and it's going to bump right to my house because that second lot is there. So, I do like what you said and it makes good sense to me.
All righty, thank you.
Can I just act, like, add one thing just for y'all's decision-making process? So, when we initially went to market it, um, we thought about selling the two, I mean, it's two lots, like, we thought about selling the two lots, but we said, you know, we'd like to maintain the integrity of like, what is currently there, um, and this allows us to do that. I don't know Mr. Riggins' plans, um, like, he's not, it's not in the contract, this is what he's going to do, this is just what he's informed us he's going to do. Like, if this deal falls apart, then it, it really doesn't leave me with much option but to try to market it in a way that allow, allows me to like, sell it as is potentially. And so, I think that if the planning commission, which could mean selling it as two lots instead of the, the single lot, which I don't want to do either, um, but, I mean, that's an option that we have. I think that if the planning commission were interested in making a conditional recommendation to the Board of Aldermen to approve it, subject to like, us moving forward with consolidating the two parcels, that would at least give me a chance to confirm with my potential purchaser that he doesn't have a problem with that. And if that's the case and he's going to build his home there, then, um, it, you know, it might not be a big deal, but if we, if we're looking at getting past June 30th, which is what I have to close right now, and then that falls apart, well, I mean, yeah, we've, we've got to sell the property. We just bought another property and we own a property by the act of, like, it needs to, he said, somebody else needs to be paying taxes on it.
Thank you, Jaclyn.
Thank you.
All right. Wade, if they were to do a, a merge of these two lots, that wouldn't need to come back to us because they're, they're conforming and everything.
They can collapse it within the county.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lot consolidation is administrated, yeah, does not come to y'all.
Thank you. But. And whatever recommendations made, it needs to be made within the vacate of this, uh, street.
Yeah, no, I'm. We're still in public hearing.
Yeah, we need to come out of public hearing.
Does anybody else need to talk? Uh, recommend, or motion to come out of public hearing?
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Aye.
All right.
I mean, I'm okay with the vacation of a lot, um, with the condition that the two lots be merged prior to the vacation of the lot, of the street, of Sell Street. Because that eliminates any sort of stranded parcels. It eliminates the need for the road to go back, uh, to the second parcel. I'm okay with that.
And that motion is based on the public good as discussed and, and compensations being the.
The, I think the, yeah, the, the compensation for damages, one, I think there are no damages and no compensation is needed, plus they're going to receive additional property by the vacation. Um, I think the public good is, is removing the city's responsibility for any maintenance or, um, you know, potential liability on the property that the city is not using and does not plan to use.
With Ben, your motion, you need to put these two P I Ns of the collapsing of those two P I Ns.
Well, is there any Commissioner want to speak against what I said? Anybody have any better ideas?
No.
All right, um, all right, I'll take a stab at this. Uh, make a motion to recommend approval of the vacation of Sell Street right away that runs east from Pine Drive between 132 Pine Drive and 140 Pine Drive upon the condition of a merger of lot P I N 61395002 dot zero zero and P I N 60129890 dot zero zero zero.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Joey?
Uh, no, I mean, you can have it for a favor. I hope you're doing.
All right, all right.
You, you did it individually last time, I don't.
I'm sorry, I can, you want a real call?
We got to get answers.
All right. All righty, what is this going to be heard on?
This next week, June 17.
All right. Do y'all want to leave it on consent or do y'all want to, uh, put it on?
There's a recommendation, I know you did on the previous one.
Yeah. That's fine. All right, so June 17. All right, thank you. So, public hearing on 1209 Robertson Street requesting a zone change from RD to Family Residential to CMX2, Community Commercial Mixed Use. Wade?
I got this one, yeah. Okay, this is the, um, result of the property. You can see it's on the doorstep Robinson, uh, the, um, opposite, um, to the railroad and, um, South Street and south of it. Um, just to the, you need to buy it on the west side of the existing, um, CMX2 zoning. So, from that standpoint, they're asking for an extension of, uh, that, that zoning district westward to this, to the single property. Uh, just to remind you that under state law, I also see the requirement for a change in zoning to show that there was a, um, error in the original zoning or that there's been a change in the use of the, the change of the neighborhood, character of the neighborhood to make the zoning change appropriate. Uh, especially, you know, changes include, uh, other rezonings, uh, new development and that sort of, that sort of thing. The applicant in this case, as part of the application, they described that in general, the, uh, changes that occurred in the downtown area, uh, included as their justification for their, for the zoning change. Uh, which point, applicant are looking at it, that the, um, current comprehensive plan from 2010, as part of its development tiers map, um, places this property in what appears to be the residential tier of low intensity category. However, the draft new comprehensive plan, um, includes this in the area designated as a low intensity commercial center.
Under 2010?
Under the 2000, the new, uh, 2025 draft of the new comprehensive plan places it in the low intensity commercial center. The, um, 2010 plan puts it in the residential tier, residential tier, low intensity category.
Thank you.
There's the, um, the, the blow up on that here is. That's what I'll, I'll have to say about it. The applicant.
Recently and asked me to, to look into, um, the zoning and the nature of the area and potential of possibly listing that for them. They had a few questions for me, so I'm new to this arena. I'm kind of a rookie here. I've never spoken and this is my second meeting I've ever been to and it was quite lively. Um, so, excuse me if I don't really know the process, um, I'm happy to answer any questions, but basically from what I saw on the map, as you see, I included in there, there was almost entirely engulfed this area in, in CM2, um, but these, this family has, you know, been owners, and the family has owned this property for a long time and they specifically said, when they asked me to look into this and to consider, um, what would be appropriate, to, to bear in mind that they wanted to, they wanted it to be neighborhood friendly and respectful to the folks who are still in there that are residents of this area. Um, so, I'm no, I'm not an expert in, by any stretch on this, uh, but after I read everything and then discussed with them, we kind of collaborated on the application process. We all felt comfortable that with something that was, um, more residential friendly type businesses that would allow like the kids and tummies and the other businesses that are immediately adjacent on the west side of this property all the way to Washington. Um, none of that is really, you know, any of the nightlife or the things that might be loud or, um, that might approach on residents trying to live there. Um, but I also did notice, I, I don't think in that span right there, there's three more houses. They also back up to the railroad tracks, which very active railroad tracks, I think, also makes it a little less, um, appealing for new, you know, someone to come build a house or anything there. The, the most recent I had seen was like in 1950 on Robinson Road, like some, something new on the side with the railroad tracks. So, and I'm speaking, you know, I, I know there's folks that, that are here that are from the neighborhood and that have been there a long time and are in the family, so they probably have a, a perspective that I can't share, um, but I'm essentially the messenger and was asked by a dear friend to help him with, uh, just trying to figure out the best way to make this property fit the changes that have happened, but also be respectful to the folks that are still there. Um, and that's really all I know and I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all might have.
All right, thank you. Commissioners?
No questions?
All right, opening the floor to people in favor or against. Name and address.
Good evening, Esther Peyton, 924 Cash Alley. The property in which she speaks of belongs to my former uncle Samuel Thurman. His two children, Vincent Lloyd Thurman and Renee Thurman, are heirs to that property. It's in our neighborhood, the black community neighborhood, it's a quiet neighborhood. That home, it has been abandoned, it needs work or it needs to be torn down and a new home built. Single-family residential home. We do not need anything else coming into our community. We've been fighting against things since 2023. We didn't ask people to come in and start bothering us, but it has happened. But we do not want the zone rechanged because the people who live there, the homes that are there, these are air property homes that have been there for 80-plus years, the majority of them. We have children that live in that home, in the homes that their grandparents built. We have grandchildren that live in homes that their grandparents built. This is a quiet community. There's enough going on on Government Street. Leave that on Robinson Street, they can create a home, as I stated, a single-family home, put someone in it or sell it and let someone else build a residential home. We don't need a rezone. We don't need another commercial coming on Cash Alley, Robinson Street, nothing within that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, how y'all doing? Been a long day for everybody, but my name's Greg Gibson. I reside at 6516 Shushon Drive in Ocean Springs, but I also am a product of 912 Blunt Street. So, that's where I was raised at. Again, just like they just said, um, we have history down there and if you look at that neighborhood, we've been fighting for a long time and we're still fighting and we're just asking if you just leave that neighborhood alone. And nobody communicated anything to the residents that live in that neighborhood or asked them if they're willing to buy that house. That, that was not conveyed to any of the residents. So, what we have here tonight was they received their letter stating that we need to come down here with the planning commission, uh, in front of the planning commission because they were asking for a rezoning. Um, and if you look, when they have a Peter Anderson festival, they're shut off access. We have to go around or go up the railroad track, on the side of the railroad track, if you have a golf cart. They drive on the side of the railroad track. They're cut off, we're cut off. We can't even get down there to see our family member. We have to go all the way around. So, we've been impacted by all of this and again, we just got to make the right decision and we know what's right, you know? We just need to leave it alone, let's say residential. I mean, we've been through enough and we continue going through the same thing. And one thing about it, what we all have in common here, we all love Ocean Springs. And so, we have that, that bond. We have been, for the last eight years, been divided and separated by different issues where we all cannot get along. And it's time for us to stop all this discourse, that by having, we need to do what's right and we know what's the right thing to do. It's just leave that neighborhood alone and we need to get to the business of what the city of Ocean Springs all about, bringing families back together. You know, we have lost friendship, we have lost family members, we have lost the connection that we all have here at Ocean Spray. That has gone out for many of the last eight years. And you can see it and you can hear it from the residents of Ocean Spray of what we want. And so, now is the time to do the right thing and we have the right thing, if I, if it's just to say, okay, we just want to just leave this neighborhood alone and we need to move forward and leave it as residential. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Julie Alon, 303 Front Beach Drive. Um, I just want to talk to the aspect of the zoning. Um, well, first of all, uh, Wade mentioned the, the draft, the comprehensive plan. That has nothing to do with this, so I don't know what else to mention. And also, uh, nothing was said about, uh, the zoning map. Has the zoning map changed in that area since the last zoning? Because that's supposed to be taken into consideration. Um, but I, I don't think it has.
Yes.
And, yeah. And I find this very similar to what y'all, uh, came for y'all about maybe last month or the month before off of, um, marketing campaign, a similar thing. I don't think you need to be putting a CM2 property. I know maybe they're going to put residential there, some type of residential, but that's not what is supposed to be considered in the zoning because they, you know, that may not happen and it could become anything right in the middle of a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Name and address.
James Lewis, 805 King Bridge Drive.
James Lewis, 805 Kane Bridge Drive. I grew up here since 1957. I know that area very well, played there, had friends there. Key thing is, it's a residential area, period. It does not need to be changed. Keep it residential, please, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Renee Oliver, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I live at 916 State Street, um, in Ocean Springs. I came back to Ocean Springs after living in California for about fifty years. I came back to renovate my family's historical property, which I'm not sure is the best idea now, all of the turmoil that has been going on in the city in regards to that neighborhood. Uh, I heard the young lady say that the Vincent, and I knew Vincent when he was a little boy, um, that Vincent wanted to be respectful of the community, the people that live there. Now, my idea is that had Vincent wanted to be respectful, he would have reached out to the community already, rather than, Vincent doesn't even live in Ocean Springs, and from my understanding, he doesn't ever plan to live in Mississippi again. So, it's a bit disingenuous to say that that's what his intentions are, and I question the intentions, to be honest with you, but, um, everybody says leave, or leave that neighborhood alone. Well, I think that the city of Ocean Springs, um, will have continually have an adversarial relationship with that community if you guys continue down the road that you're going. I love Ocean Springs, it's a beautiful town, and after living in California, I didn't think I would feel that way about it, but I do, but I want my community not to be commercial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, friend Sylvia Clay Warren, 11307 Robinson and 1313 Robinson. From Candy to DeSoda to Cash Alley and Robinson. Needs to stay residential. We don't want Government Street filtering over to Robin, to, to our area, because once you make that commercial, they're gonna tell them what they're gonna put there. And if Vincent, who's my first cousin, our mothers are, we're sisters, mom, aunt is dead now, if he wanted to be respectful, he should've came to the family first. That's his first cousin right there, too. Do you understand? So keeping it residential is the, the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Wells, I live at 1206 Robinson. I live adjacent to the property in Washington, and I'm against turning commercial. We have problems already down here with the eighteen-wheelers coming down Robinson trying to get to Government Street. The traffic that's diverting from Government Street racing down through Robinson Avenue. We don't need any more congestion down here. It's a quiet family, close knit neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way. We don't know what Vincent and Renee's intentions is, but we don't want it commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience in, uh, for or against? All right, do I have a motion to close? Hold on, we got one. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Gloria Hughes, 924 Blunt Street, Ocean Springs, and I'm with the rest of the bodies there to keep that area residential. I agree with Sandra, we don't need any more, any commercial activities in that area right now, okay? And my question would be, do we have enough security, enough police force to protect that if we do make that commercial? You know, there's other, other things to, that goes with it, that comes with it, okay? So there's a lot of consideration that the city of Ocean Springs should do, before they want to commercialize areas or enlarge the commercial places and what we are building here. And I'm a lifetime member, I'll be seventy-two years old, okay? And I think downtown Ocean Springs, uh, some of it's good, change is good, but too much change is not. Ocean Springs has had too much change. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that would like to...
I just wanted to add a few things. I appreciate hearing that everything y'all said, because today, I've, you know, only known one side of things, and the sentiment, um, to have respect toward the, the neighborhood, the residential part, not that, not that Vincent doesn't feel that way, but mostly I was originally contacted by Nikki Seymour, that's, um, how I got involved, and so I have talked to Vincent, but I did feel that genuinely from him, that that was something that mattered to him. Um, and so at least that's the notion I was operating under when I was looking into it. Um, it's a line she left, and the booking she said, and I don't think is accurate, she said it was in the middle of the residential neighborhood, and this one is directly adjacent to a C M X two, and if you look, you know, I think it's one and a half acres all the way down to Washington Street, those are all C M X two. On the right of it, there's residential houses on Robinson Street, and I'm talking strictly that are on the railroad tracks, because that's part of the issue here as far as, um, the usefulness, the value of the land, and being able to sell it. And from my understanding, that house is not habitable, it probably needs to go. Um, and, and maybe somebody could rehab it, but, uh, just in my profession that I'm in, like, we're gonna have a hard time, um, doing it that way, but I, I feel like that with, if you look at the map and the surrounding with C M X two, or C M X two on the south side, um, like, my heart goes out to y'all because I, I feel like y'all are, y'all are in a, on an island, and I guess when I was looking at it, and I really didn't know that they were being in opposition to it, but it, because it was important to them, it felt important to me, um, to maybe zone it in a way that would be respectful, where it wasn't somebody else that's coming in from the outside that wants to go full commercial bars, you know, in a more intense commercial operation. So that was why I was looking more at something that was, um, like a doctor's offices or things that you would find like eight to five not, not open afterwards, just like what's next to the property already. It's kids and tummies, I think, Dr. McLinden's office.
And then July, and then...
Close, yeah.
It's residential, it's just a office. It's on one side, so it's one side, residential.
Going toward Washington?
Going toward, uh, going down.
Yeah, 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 right. I, so I know immediately adjacent on the east side are three residential houses, um, and then on the west side, going all the way back to Washington, is C M X two, so we're like, we're right there, you know? So I can see it's kind of like a tug of war on either side of that, and I think what, what made me look at that as less likely to be residential friendly is that close to such an active railroad track, so.
Two brand new.
Those are, those are on the, those are... There aren't, there aren't homes that are on the opposite side of the track down.
All right, thank you, and everything, um, we're gonna discuss a little bit, and if we have any more questions, we will ask, so, thank you. Any motion to close public hearing? Say it for me.
Motion and second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, unanimous. All right, so I'm gonna make the clarification, uh, here. We do have a twenty, uh, 2010 comprehensive plan that does show the area as still residential in that area. Wade did mention that we do have a proposed comprehensive plan, but we are not operating under that comp plan today. So, um, there's a few things that I do want to bring up. Um, we need to look at the character of the area, has it changed to warrant a rezone, um, or is there a public need to rezone? And also, the fact is, there is parcels that were over off of, uh, Persian of recent history that was requesting a rezone, that did not get a rezone, so just to put that out there.
Yeah, I think this is a, a pretty clear case. When you say change in character of the neighborhood, there isn't a change in character of the neighborhood, but if we did this, we would be changing the character of the neighborhood. And so I think for me, it's pretty clear, we don't want to change the character of the neighborhood, that's not our, our remit. Ours is to determine if there already has been one, and I don't think there has.
All righty. Joseph, any comment?
No comment.
Marshall?
No.
Joey? Any comment?
Yes.
All righty. Do I have a, a motion on the table?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to recommend denial of rezoning from R D two, family residential to C M X two, community commercial mixed use located at 1209 Robertson Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, do a roll call. Uh, Joseph?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Uh, Joey?
Yes, aye.
All right, unanimous, all right, thank you. All right. Uh, this can...
This will also require public hearing of Board of Aldermen.
And this will be a public hearing for?
July, July first.
July first. All right, did y'all hear that? That, that there will be a public hearing July first on this, uh, at the Board of Aldermen meeting. All right, thank y'all. All righty. Yeah, all right, do, we have a general public comment that is non-related to any agenda items, if anybody would like to speak.
Yes, sir.
All righty.
James, I want to commend you all on the job that you have done in this change. It has been a job that required a lot of thought process, soul searching, and doing the right thing. And I think, deep down in your hearts, you did a lot of soul searching, and you've done the right thing, and I thank God for you.
Hey, Mr. Lewis. All righty, anybody else for a general public comment? None? All right, moving on to commissioners' forum. All right, I'm gonna open it up with, it has been an honor to be on the planning commission for the last eight years. Thank y'all, thank y'all to the planning department, Hannah, Wade, Elizabeth. Um, it kind of saddens me a little bit, so...
You're not going away.
No, moving up, you're not moving. It's a new chapter in my life, but, you know, thank y'all for allowing me, uh, to be here and, uh, you know, and thank you.
We thank you.
So, um, uh, anyway, other commissioners, y'all have any comment?
Yeah, I want to, again, congratulate you on your election to the Board of Aldermen, and although we'll miss you here, we'll have somebody that has some deep knowledge of how everything works up on the board, so we wish you good luck and Godspeed.
Thank you, Marshall.
And, um, sent this email from Lady Phelan, and he asked me to read this in the commissioner's forum. Says, "I hate to miss my last meeting with Matthew, but wanted to take a quick opportunity to congratulate him on a well-deserved election as Alderman. It's been a pleasure serving on the planning commission with Matthew for so many years, and I always appreciated his thoughtful insights and his collaborative spirit. While I believe the planning commission will miss his commitment and his passion, I know he'd be in a stronger position to pursue his passions for better Ocean Springs. Thank you, Matthew, and best of luck on the new chapter." And he feeling.
Thank you, Andy.
And to emphasize, staff says the same thing.
We, we, and, 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 and,